The approval, the minute's stand is written. Next we have, I don't believe we have any awards or presentations. Audience participation?
Yes, we do. First we have Laura Leonard.
Hi, I'm Laura Leonard, resident of Twinsburg on Presidential Parkway and I'm also the director of the Twinsburg Public Library. I was glad to hear during the caucus that the Planning Commission asked the cell phone towers to look a little bit more beautiful because that's what I came to talk to you tonight. I'm not against better cellphone reception because I have a dead zone in my office. The city of Twinsburg and the schools have always been great partners with the library from the shared funding of our parking lot in 1997, the mutual space sharing we have, allowing the high school traffic to travel through the library lot in the morning, and the mutual loan of equipment that we share. The interaction between our three entities is truly a classic example of collaborative resources for the city. When considering allowing the placement of many cell out towers now and in the future, while I understand that the polls will be on public roadways, I hope the council will consider that for this and future requests, the fact that the foundation of the Twinsburg Library with private donations totaling approximately $110,000 has gifted the library with a reading garden, updated landscaping, and a tasteful electronic signboard to create a beautiful and useful setting for the users of Twinsburg Public Library. We have 30,000 visitors per month and we circulate an average of 100,000 materials per month. Those visitors and users see the effort of the city, schools, and library to make Ravenna Road an attractive campus setting. If we have an overpopulation of roadways in the future with utility poles and towers, that would detract from the efforts of the foundation and others throughout the community to make Twinsburg a naturally beautiful place to live, so please consider their placement carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more?
Yes, we do. Donald Spice?
Yes, I'm Donald Spice, 9666 Darrell Road. I'm on the Board of Trustees of the library and so I have the same vested interests that everybody explains what we have. But one of the things about this cell tower, and I see that Laura had some pictures that shows different, kind of different versions of it, I don't know exactly where she got them from, but in some instances, of course, it shows not only a tower going up, but also some wires and things coming to it and that are above grade, which it would make sense that it needs to get its power from someplace. But what I would suggest is that we, I'd like to see that we diminish the number of poles and things that are on our major streets. When you go on McTyrion and you take a look at that and see how beautiful that parkway looks, and then just imagine what it would look like if on our major streets, Ravenna Road, Aurora Road, and Darrell Road were void of telephone poles and electric services. So I think in the long run, we want to look at eliminating these. And as a first step, Laura mentioned about the fitness center is right immediately behind the library, and we have a driveway that connects the library parking area with the fitness area parking lot. So there's in effect a driveway that runs up and that is about 50 feet from our southeast property line. The property line of the back of the homes on Ashdale is probably about 50 feet from that driveway. And there's a property line with the school then that's back behind our parking lot. There's a gate on a driveway that goes through there and in the morning that gate is open during school hours, school days rather, early in the morning before the library's opened, and there's a lot of traffic comes through our parking lot, which is a great idea. It frees up the driveway opposite McTyrion. And so we like to share that, but it would seem to me that we could put a tower back in that area and wouldn't be on Ravenna Road and whatever utilities it might need would be accessible from there because weight comes down and butts against the school property. At one time they were considering putting a driveway in from that point, and so it would be an easy place to put it. It would be back out of sight, much like our big radio tower here. You see it from all over the city, but yet when you're driving down Ravenna Road, it's not, you don't even see it. You're not aware that it's there. And I would like to see to start thinking in terms of that with our poles. And as a longer run, I would like to see a concerted effort at minimizing the above-ground electric wires and telephone and cable and everything else, and begin to look at projects to put them below grade. I think it would make the city of Twinsburg look a major difference without changing any buildings, changing any streets, doing anything else, it would look 100% better. Go down at the hardware store. Look across the street toward the old school and see how many wires you can see from that point. It almost cuts off your view. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any other audience participation?
There is none.
Okay. Next we'll move on to pending legislation. First we have ordinance. Oh, I'm sorry. We're on, I'm sorry. We're on council communication and committee reports. Mr. Yates, would you like to begin? Apologize.
Sure. Okay, the Planning Commission met on October 20th. There was a number of items. It was a public hearing and then a presentation regarding the trail from Glenwill to Glenwood Park by Ms. Moore. So there was discussion regarding the, you know, the process moving forward with implementing that trail and the proposed layout of it. I must say that just from a personal standpoint, I've walked that property. It's beautiful property, runs along Tinker's Creek. It's, a lot of thoughts gone into design. I believe the design is also, could help some of the property owners that really have some erosion problems with Tinker's Creek, but you know, we've got just, it's, I think, a great cooperative type arrangement between Twinsburg and Glenwill. Also on Planning Commission, there was the final site plan approval for FedEx. FedEx is now, came back and with a revised layout which was accepted by the Planning Commission, they limited some of the access for employees in and off of Route 82. And so that FedEx final site plan approval was approved unanimously. There was also the Cornerstone Business Park Phase Two, which had been on a topic in front of Planning Commission that was also approved. Then Kel-Tec, there's a building addition. There was some issues regarding that site. They came back in front of Planning Commission with some revisions and that project was approved unanimously. The last was the KEPS Technologies with the different poles that we were, that we were just discussing. And there was a couple of different sites that were added. And two of those sites, let's see, one of them was, one of them was on Darrell Road in Meadowwood, which was passed. And then one was on Ethan's Drive, which was not approved. So I'm not sure what they're going to do if they're going to come back with another proposed location for the pole. I know they've, we've, Planning Commission's tried to work with them in minimizing the impact to the residential districts. And I know the comments were just made, so I believe those will get back to Planning Commission as they continue to try to move forward with that, with that project. The next Planning Commission meeting is on November 3rd. Couple other announcements. There is a veterans' presentation and luncheon that is November 10th at 11:30, Twinsburg Senior Center. It's basically honoring those who served. Now, I believe Anna Maria is sponsoring it, and so I was asked to announce that, but it's again Monday, November 10th at 11:30 at the Senior Center. There's another event that's going on that I'm not sure if there's a lot of people in Twinsburg that know about it, but it's an organization called A Kid Again. And we've got local, we've got residents that have started this organization that basically provide outings and activities for families with kids with terminal conditions. They're doing a fundraising event at Maggiano's on November 7th. It's, sounds like a great event. They've got silent auctions. I know that the ticket will include valley parking, appetizers, salad, you know, dinner, and there's also beer and wine there. So if you're interested in the event, there's a lot more information on their website, which is www.a kid again.org. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is that, is that a local organization or is it?
It's, it's organized by our local residents here that have seemed to really taken off this organization.
Mr. Roden?
I have no report tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Scafidi?
Good evening. Thank you. The Finance Committee met this evening and I attended that meeting. It's one of my committees and I'm sure the chairman will give a report on that. My other committees have not met, however, Friday night I did have the opportunity to attend the celebrity bartender fundraiser at Brewster's. Had an opportunity to try my hand at bartending as well. It was a great event, great evening. Proceeds for the Costa Freedom Mall that'll be coming to town next year. We had a lot of celebrities come out from not only the radio stations, but from the TV stations. So again, it was a great evening and my hats off to all those that helped put that event together. I believe it was Angel and Shannon and Adele here from City Hall. So these ladies have been working tirelessly and very hard for the Costa Freedom and all the events that they put on. So great job, Shannon, if you pass it along. It was a great evening, great event. Other than that, that's my report tonight.
Okay, my committees have not met, but I did attend the Taste of Twinsburg meeting on October 23rd. And just to put it out there, the Taste of Twinsburg will be next summer on June 20th. So mark your calendars. It looks like it's going to be quite an event. There's an amazing group of volunteers putting this together. So I just, that was, that's really all I have on it right now because they're busy, you know, during the planning stages of it, but I think they've already got a pretty good start on it. That's all I have. Mr. Fury?
Thank you. I attended the Finance Committee meeting earlier tonight, and the next scheduled committee meeting that I have will be the Treasury Investment Board at 5:30 on Tuesday, November 4th. Last Friday, I had an opportunity to attend a workshop from the American Planners Association in Westlake. The workshop, the classes that I attended were right-size parking and it really was a good class because it talked about the things that you need to take into account as you're doing revitalization in a, in a city. And those are definitely things that we need to look at as things change downtown. Also ethics for planners and public officials, land banking, and best practices for zoning and review. I also was awarded the Freedom Wall fundraiser at Brewster's. I was probably not nearly as efficient as Mr. Scafidi was, but I was awarded a certificate for a tattoo, which I've had long discussions with Mrs. Stauffer on whether she wants to take it from me or not. I've talked about, had two parlors with Mrs. Stauffer more than any other member of council in the last four years. So, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seracy?
Thank you. Good evening. The Capital Improvements Board has met three times. They met on October 2nd, the 13th, and the 20th. They made their final decisions and voted on items they would like to recommend to council. They also came to our finance meeting a week ago, last Tuesday, and made a presentation on what things they recommended for funding for 2015. And then the Finance Committee did meet earlier this evening. We went over the items on the capital improvements list and took a preliminary accounting of what things we want to send forward to council as far as recommendation for the budget for 2015. The Safety Committee, we've scheduled a meeting. We're going to meet next week on Monday at 1 o'clock here at City Hall. And the Twins Day Committee will meet next Wednesday, November 5th at 7:00 PM at the Twins Day Festival Center. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDermott?
I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Mrs. Stauffer. Well, to follow up on the comments about the Costa Freedom celebrity bartending, which I was not able to attend, there is going to be another Costa Freedom event, and this one is coming up on Wednesday, November 5th, so that's next week, and it is a wine tasting event to be held at Brewster's. So I would hope that you all come out and support our efforts here to raise money to bring the Costa Freedom tribute, traveling tribute to the city of Twinsburg. The pre-sale tickets are $25 and at the door, $30. The event starts at 6 o'clock next Wednesday night. I attended the last one last year and it really was very, very nice. It's Italian food. The foods are paired with the lines and I think you would have a great, great time. So I hope you can help us raise some money. And that committee is, again, doing a great job. Thank you. Also, a few other events coming up. First of all, don't forget to vote next Tuesday. November 4th is Election Day, and as you know, we have several charter amendments on the ballot, and also we have many legislators in the area who are running for election and reelection, so be sure to get out the vote on November 4th. November 8th is the Turkey Trot, and this is an annual event. It's a five-mile race, starts at the Fitness Center, and every year it seems to get bigger and bigger. Lots of fun, and that's November 8th. You can register online or you can register at the Community Center. A few other events coming up on, well, you already mentioned the veterans' presentation and lunch, which I'm very excited about. This is the first time the Senior Center is doing it. And again, thank you to Anna Maria of Aurora for sponsoring it. What a great way to recognize our veterans, and I'm, I'm going to be there and I'm very excited about that. The Senior Center also conducts a Thanksgiving feast on November 21st. That's at 6 o'clock. You can register for the Thanksgiving feast. And also, starting November 3rd, is time to register for the seniors' holiday party, which takes place Friday, December 19th. It's $15 for an individual ticket, $140 for a reserved table of 10. And it is filled to capacity every year at the Hilton Garden Inn. Lots of fun. The seniors love it. I love it. So start registering Monday, November 3rd. It fills up very, very quickly. The Thanksgiving feast, you can start registering, actually registration opened yesterday, October 27th. And again, another event that fills up very quickly. What I'm really happy to talk about this evening, I'm very excited about, is a project that we have going with the township. You know, many, many years ago, going back probably a dozen years, we had a tree lighting ceremony on the square in the city of Twinsburg, and we always worked with the township on it. Well, we are bringing that back to the city of Twinsburg. It's going to be a joint project. Council graciously approved the new lights for City Hall, and the township is going to have new decorations on the square. They have a brand-new tree that's going up, and the tree is going to be a musical tree. We are going to start the event at Twinsburg City Hall. It's called, it's going to be called Light Up the Town. It will be on November 29th at 6 o'clock. We have a rain date. If it rains on the 29th, that's a Saturday night, then we'll do it on Sunday, the 30th, at 6 o'clock. We'll start at City Hall. We have lots of events planned, starting here, a parade down to the square, and then we will have the tree lighting on the square. Santa will be on the square, not necessarily to sit on, you know, to, won't have Santa sitting, or the kid sitting on Santa's lap, but he will be talking to the children, handing out candy canes, and there'll be lots of events going on. So this is something new for the city. Well, it's kind of a throwback, and we're very excited about caroling and all kinds of fun things to do. Also, it's going to be a whole month of holiday celebrations. On December 13th, the Santa breakfast that is usually held at the Community Center will be held at the Fire Department. So it'll be even more fun for the kids to be right there in the fire station for their Santa breakfast. And in the afternoon, Santa will be on the square during the day, and it will be a photo opportunity for Santa and your children. So lots of things coming up, and again, we're very excited about this joint project with the township. Hope you'll mark your calendars and join us for those events. And thank you, council, for approving the lights. You're going to love them. With that, we have our finance report. Karen?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to report on our local distribution income tax that we received for the month of October. As of date, $1,708,443. Compared to last year, October, receipts was in the amount of $1,846,649. This reflects a decrease of 7% or $138,206 over last year. The total year-to-date receipts collected for 2014 is $19,687,423. Compared to last year, 2013 collection was $21,321,904. This reflects a decrease of 8% or $1,634,491 less over last year. The net cash distribution applied due to the quarter percent reduction change is $203,0813. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Karen. Obviously, we expected our revenues to be down this year, and we're getting towards the end of the year. We're somewhere going to be in the range of about 8%, which is what we expected. There for a while, in the middle of the year, it was looking worse than that, but we've recovered a little bit. So if we can hold at a downtrend of 8%, I think that's doing pretty, pretty well. Obviously, with the rescission of the quarter percent income tax, we are still holding our own, so glad to see that. Thank you, Karen. We have some reports this evening, I think. Anybody? Collet, HR?
Good evening, everybody. In the Civil Service Department, a dispatch test was held on Friday, October 17th. 51 candidates took the test. Civil Service will be certifying their list at the next meeting, which is November 13th. Then from that list, we'll be able to hire one full-time dispatcher to replace the promotion of Chris Yakapovic to supervisory position. Also, on our November 13th Civil Service meeting, we'll be starting that with a public hearing regarding some minor changes to the Civil Service rules. In the IT Department, network upgrades are moving along. One of the latest activities was the replacement of the printer server, and that's a server that coordinates all the activity between printers, copiers, scanners in, throughout the city. So that was a pretty big project. And also, we are scheduled to replace several PCs in the Police Department this month. And then also, Mark is starting to research some companies who can provide some quotes for upgrading our cameras and recording equipment here in our council chambers, hopefully trying to get that done for early next year. Even tonight, as Mark was booting up the cameras, he had a slight issue with one of them, had to kind of tweak it a little bit to get it working, so it is an ongoing problem that, that hopefully, hopefully we can replace those next year. In the HR Department, in the area of recruiting, our Police Department has been attending job fairs to promote the department and to gather contact information for those candidates who are interested in being notified of our next entrance exam. And they're utilizing some new technology, some iPads with an app that collects, the candidates just punch in their, their names and their email address, their contact information, so that they can be contacted when we do have a test. And also can be, can be, we're going to probably do a little bit of marketing, send out a postcard here and there, just to remind them of upcoming activities with our Police Department. So hopefully, we can get a more diverse workforce. Our Healthcare Cost Committee, Cost Containment Committee met last week with our broker, Mike Troyon. We reviewed our claims costs for the first three quarters of our experience year, which is November through October, and we discussed various options for wellness initiatives to reduce claims costs. That's my report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, did you have anything this evening? No? That's all we have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to legislation. First, we have ordinance 102,014. Shannon?
In ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the general revenue account as established in ordinance 19, 2014, the appropriation ordinance for the city of Twinsburg for the year 2014.
Okay, this is the third and final reading. So this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 102,014. Is there a second?
A second.
I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Fury. Karen, do you want to explain this one more time?
This is the, um...
This is the professional services?
Or this was the Costa Freedom?
This is Costa Freedom.
Again, this is for the race. The revenue that we collected for the successful race, we have to receipt it, and as a result, when we expense it out, we also have to appropriate those funds in order to do that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Seracy?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 102,014 passes by a 7-0 vote. Next, we have ordinance 106, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the general revenue account as established in ordinance 19, 2014, the appropriation ordinance for the city of Twinsburg for the year 2014.
Okay, this is on its second reading. Next, we have ordinance 109, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance approving a change order to the contract with GPD for modifications of additional work related to the state Route 91 improvement project.
This is also on its second reading. Next, we have ordinance 112, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance approving a change order to the contract with ANA Safety for modifications of additional work related to the 2014 roadway striping project and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rolls on ordinance 112, 2014, place it on its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Scafidi. Larry, would you like to talk a little bit on this, on the, on the emergency as well?
The work's already completed.
It's already been completed? Yeah. Okay, I'm...
Pretty much, the work is already completed, and this is the balance of what we owe on it.
Okay. Pardon me? Oh. Oh, this was the road striping program?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's $2,200.
Right.
Right. Okay. All right, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Seracy?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Okay. Pardon me. Oh. Emerg, let's see, I apologize. Ordinance 112, 2014. Emergency passes, I apologize. I apologize. Seven, zero. All right. Now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 112, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion. It was seconded by, I'm not sure which one. Mr. Sorese? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermit?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 112, 2014 passes by a 7-0 vote. Next, we have Ordinance 113, 2014.
In ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the general revenue account as established in Ordinance 19, 2014, the appropriation ordinance for the city of Twinsburg for the year 2014 and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rolls on Ordinance 113, 2014 and place it on its third and final reading, declare, and declared an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Yates.
This is changing the appropriations from $374,000 to $414,000. Some of the items were not accounted for because they were unexpected. And I believe that one item was just overlooked in the budget. That was the maintenance agreement.
Any other discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermit?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, emergency clause passes, 7-0. Now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 113, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. McDermott. Any further discussion? Okay, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, emergency clause passes, 7-0. Now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 113, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Fury. Any discussion?
Yes. Larry, I have a question. After consideration of what Mr. Spice said, do you think there's any possibility of going back and reviewing that alternate location?
The antennas that are gonna go up on Ravenna Road don't have wires provided to them overhead.
Right.
They'll be served by, you know, the fiber from the roadway or electric that's underground, as far as I know. And the particular location here actually is gonna be almost directly opposite the city's front door, as opposed to being down in front of the library. So I don't know how much of a concern there might be there.
I agree. I would like them to take a look and see if there are some less, some areas that they could possibly put them back. That was one of the concerns I was having as well.
I mean, I'm aware that there's no wires involved with it. That is the box sitting on the pole. But I was just wondering if that other, I mean, the location makes sense to me if it's feasible. I don't know if it is.
Yeah. The location things have been kicked around substantially in Planning Commission. That doesn't mean that they're, you know, if you have a request for change, it couldn't be done. But I assure you, Planning Commission has strongly considered each location. In addition to that, these are part of a public utility. So they could be located in the city as a public utility, but they still need to make an effort to meet the city's zoning requirements.
Could this be delayed till you found out?
Well, what do I need to find out? Do we need to review, do you need to review the locations? Or, I mean, that's up to you.
Yeah, I would, I would like to do that.
I think, you know, I don't see the time, the necessity that we move immediately. So maybe if we just at least hold off till the next council meeting, and that will give us an opportunity to talk to them, see if they would consider that location back there and other locations. I agree with Mr. Spice. I mean, it'd be wonderful if we didn't have overhead wires in the city of Twinsburg. When we did the State Route 91 project, we tried to locate them all on one side so that we had fewer crossings across State Route 91. If you come down 82, every place you look, there's wires. However, this is not a wired project, but it still has a presence.
It is one more pole. Yeah, it still has a presence. So I like the idea of finding less conspicuous areas.
Yeah, I think if we could find a less conspicuous area, that'd be great. If we can't, we can't. But maybe we could just take, at least have that discussion with them before we pass it. And we have another meeting coming up next week. It's not that much of a delay.
Right.
And I know there's, I'm not sure, the one location that failed that they really wanted, because I think this is a whole network, that they've gotta have so many locations within the city to make it work.
Right.
So I'm not sure if they're gonna be back, because the one that they were proposing on Ethan's Drive, basically on the golf course property, was, you know, that failed. So I'm not sure where they stand in terms of...
I believe there's actually approved for, approved for the Ravenna Road location near Meadowwood that it was originally anticipated to be in.
Okay.
They are also going to be bringing another location to Planning Commission at the next Planning Commission meeting.
Oh, okay. So there's a little time.
Yet another location to be considered.
We have time.
Okay. All right, let's just give a little further thought to this, then.
Okay.
So do we need to withdraw the motion?
What process do I withdraw the motion?
Yeah. Just withdraw the motion. You'll be fine.
Okay, this time, I'd like to withdraw the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Is that as far as it goes?
Yeah, you're on the next thing.
We don't have to vote on them.
No, withdraw the motion.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, then we're going to move on to ordinance. Let's see, we're 16. Thank you. Ordinance 116, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the general revenue account as established in Ordinance 19, 2014, the appropriation ordinance for the city of Twinsburg for the year 2014.
Okay, this is on its first reading. Next, we have Resolution 117, 2014.
A resolution appointing one teen member to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 117, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Yates. Any discussion?
The, the member is Sean Clune. He came to the last meeting. Very enthusiastic young man. So I think he's gonna be a great fit for Parks and Rec. He was excited, came with ideas, and that's what we actually look for when, you know, we bring in the high school students to try to help provide a different perspective in the community's Parks and Rec. So I'm excited to have him part of, part of the group.
Thank you.
I ran into Sean earlier this week, and he was just totally excited to take this position. I've had him in baseball a couple of years, and you picked a good kid.
Nice kid.
Great, great. Anything else? Okay, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermit?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Resolution 118, 2014 passes by a 7-0 vote. Next, we have Resolution 118, 2014. Shannon?
A resolution acknowledging council's receipt and review of the monthly financial statements submitted by the Finance Department for June, July, August, and September 2014.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 118, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Sorese. Any discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermit?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. McDermit?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Resolution 118 passes, 2014 passes by a 7-0 vote. Next, we have Ordinance 119, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance establishing a policy for the handling of contracts for capital improvement projects in excess of $25,000.
I think that's on its first reading. And finally, we have Resolution 120, 2014. Shannon?
A resolution repealing Resolution 59, 2014, and requesting and authorizing the Summit County Board of Elections to remove Issue 41 from the city of Twinsburg ballot at the general election of November 4th, 2014, related to proposed amendments to Section 7801 of the Charter of the City of Twinsburg regarding changes, changes the procedure for changes to zoning classifications or districts and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rolls on Resolution 120, 2014. Place it on its third and final reading and declare it an emergency.
You just have to adopt it as an emergency.
I know, we went through this before. In order to get it, we need, we want to waive the 10 days.
Yes, you just adopt it as an emergency.
What he's saying, we don't have to suspend the rules, because there are no rules for the resolution.
Oh, I apologize. Okay. So take out the suspend the rules. Okay. I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 120, 2014. Place it on its third and final reading and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Sorese. Any discussion?
Mr. Mastroz, could you explain this briefly?
Sure. This is a, a resolution which will essentially remove or remove the vote for Issue 41 at next week's election. Issue 41 specifically dealt with Charter Amendment 7801 as it related to zoning text changes in the future. We have come up with a, what we feel is a, is a better compromise as far as language that will be presented in 2015, hopefully in May of 2015, to replace this Charter Amendment.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Thank you. Any other discussion?
If I could just add, as I said earlier, I have spoken to some of the members of the Charter Review Commission, and this gets across exactly what they tried to do initially